Thank you. Item number six.
Water supply update and adoption of resolution establishing revised water conservation regulations.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the water supply manager. And I'm here to provide a water supply update and recommend adoption of a resolution establishing revised water conservation regulations. So first, I will discuss the drought status, provide information on the supply strategy, and discuss extraordinary conservation. So the current drought, we've been in since 2012. We've experienced the five driest consecutive years on record. And even with the recent rains, we're still in a drought. We've had a lot of challenges, and I think we've been very successful in making it as far as we have, but there's still a ways to go in recovering from the impacts of drought. So I wanted to take a look back at where we've been. In February of 2014 is when the stage one drought condition was declared. At that time, we had a voluntary 20% water conservation target. Shortly after, in May of 2014, the city declared a stage two drought and changed the conservation from voluntary to mandatory. A year later, the drought conditions had persisted and worsened, and a stage three drought emergency was declared in May of 2015. The mandatory conservation target was increased to 25%. Another year of drought persisted, and in April of 2016, the stage three drought condition was amended to increase the conservation target to be 35%. And most recently, in December of 2016, the conservation target was increased to 40%. That was with forecasted shortages during our peak demands of summer of 2017. We were projecting to have some issues with our summer demands and enacted a lawn watering ban in anticipation of that. This is a chart of recent rainfall. So here you can see in 2012 through 2016, we had well below average rainfall. This is at Gibraltar Reservoir. The average rainfall is about 28 inches. In 2017, we've had slightly above normal rainfall. This hatched mark was from the major storm that we had February 17th and 18th. It was almost 10 inches of rain. And but for that one storm, we would still be below normal rainfall. So has the rain helped? Yes, it has in short, but we're still in a drought. At the beginning of our water year, most of the state was in an exceptional drought. And just a few months later, Northern California had quite a bit of precipitation, and our area was the only remaining area in California in exceptional drought status. With the rains in February, conditions have improved, but we're still in a drought. So now Gibraltar is full. We have, the cities, the only, Gibraltar is the city's resource. Kachuma, which is a shared resource, is partially full. But our groundwater basins are at historic lows, and it takes several years for our groundwater basins to recover. This is a chart of Kachuma Reservoir storage. And the black line is the storage from the last drought. You can see it got pretty low, or I'm sorry. The green line is the last drought, 1986 to 1993. And this was the March miracle, which didn't fill the reservoir. A year later was when we recovered from the drought. The black line is where we are now. So here we are today. And you can see the reservoir levels for Kachuma are approximately the same as they were in 2014, when we began this journey of the drought. So we don't know if this year will be followed by wet years, or if it will be followed by dry years. So we're planning in the event it's followed by dry years. This is a comparison of our overall water supplies. In 2014, we had a full allocation from Kachuma. This year, we have started off with a zero allocation, and we anticipate a partial allocation by April 1st. This is assuming a 40% allocation from Kachuma. We'd have 3,300 acre feet. In 2014, we had 2,700 acre feet of carryover in Kachuma. This year, our carryover is currently zero, but that's what I would expect. We haven't received an allocation from Kachuma for quite a while. The last time was October of 2015, which was a 45% allocation. And that was followed by two years of zero allocation, so not much water to carry over. Gibraltar was at about 400 acre feet. It's now full. And we plan to use about 3,300 acre feet of that supply through the rest of this water year, which is September. In 2014, the entire state was in a, the entire state was in a drought. And we had a 5% allocation from the state water project, which is the lowest ever seen. This year, we have currently a 60% allocation, and that's expected to increase. We had 2,500 in storage. This is around at San Luis Reservoir. And we currently have about 3,500 that we could use this year in storage. And then a big difference is, in 2014, our groundwater basins were full. Our downtown basin was full, and Foothill was at about 80%, and so they were rested. Now they're at historic lows with our downtown basin and Foothill Basin, with about 30% of the remaining yield available. Those yields are based on the, on a modeling study by the USGS. They have a detailed numerical groundwater model that we use to estimate the remaining yield. And we've been working with USGS for decades, collecting information on groundwater levels and water quality. So I wanted to show you some of that data today. We have about 60 monitoring wells for water levels. And so I've just selected a few representative ones for today. This is the Foothill Basin. And the red down at the bottom is city pumping. And the green is pumping by La Cumbre, the other major known pumper in the Foothill Basin. So this is the last drought, when you see this dip down in water levels. And then after the last drought, the city reduced its pumping, and the groundwater basin pretty much recovered after about 10 years. And then here we are in the current drought. And you can see our water levels are roughly the same, slightly below where they were in the last drought. This is Storage Unit 1. So here's the last drought, where there's the dip in water levels. This is in the upper producing zone, and on the right is in the lower producing zone, where you see the dip in water levels. After the last drought, we had very limited pumping to recover the basins. It took about five years for the water levels to recover, and here we are in the current drought. We also are monitoring for chlorides, which is an indicator of seawater intrusion. So we have a monitoring network. And this well here is located very close to the coast. We measure chlorides at various elevations within the groundwater basin. We had seawater intrusion in the last drought, which is on the left hand here. And then you can see it returned to normal. And then here we are in the current drought, with some seawater intrusion occurring right at the coast, which was expected. This is a little further in, about halfway between the coast and 101, we have a monitoring well. And this is the well where, once we see chloride concentrations increasing, we expand our monitoring program. We add additional wells and also increase the frequency that we're sampling. So this was the last drought. And then you can see the chlorides reduced over time, and now they've gone up a little bit. And finally, this is the well near the 101, where we really don't want seawater intrusion reaching this far. Once it gets to the 101, we would consider turning down our wells, because we don't want it getting any closer to our production wells. And as you can see, there's no indication of seawater intrusion occurring near the 101.
You have a question, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, why is there apparently less seawater intrusion than the previous drought levels when the water table is lower? The basins have been hit harder with this drought and the pumping than last time?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's a great question. It could be that I'm not, the water levels we were looking at might be in different locations, slightly from exactly where our chloride concentration, chloride wells are. But generally, it's a function of the amount of fresh water that's mixing with the seawater intrusion. So seawater, and it, the concentrations can vary. What we're worried about is the trends. So once we see the trends going up, we know there is some level of intrusion occurring. But it could just be that the monitoring wells we're looking at are at slightly different locations.
Okay, thank you.
So the role of D cell is something that's different from 2014. We now have D cell coming online. It's a truly local supply. Without D cell, groundwater is our only truly local resource. All of our surface water comes from the other side of the mountains. And so if there's any interruption in surface water, we'd be relying on groundwater. And now we'll have D cell as well for drinking water. It's an important part of a diverse water supply portfolio. Having a diverse water supply portfolio helps us weather the droughts and the emergencies that we experience. The D cell plant is a drought supply by policy, based on the long-term water supply plan. Our permits allow for it to be operated in non-drought conditions as well. And after this drought emergency ends and our groundwater supplies recover, we'll want to reevaluate the role of D cell in our water supply. So the desalination plant was approved by City Council to be reactivated in July of 2015. And it's been a less, it's a very complicated project that's been completed in less than two years. Major construction is complete, and we're currently in the testing phase. Water is being brought onshore and being run through the filters. And so it takes a while for the media to mature, but we are in the testing phase at this point, with the plant hopefully coming online in April. So in summary, the drought's not over. Kachuma is at 2014 levels when the drought first became serious. And we're planning for this year to be followed by two dry years. And the drought impacts will last for several years, five to 10 years for our groundwater basins to fully recover. So for our water supply strategy, we're looking three years out. This is consistent with what the state is requiring for conservation requirements. With the recent rains, we now have Gibraltar full, and we anticipate a partial allocation from Kachuma on April 1st. And some main points I wanted to get across is with those recent rains, we're able to postpone a decision on D cell expansion and the conveyance pipeline until a later date. Extended that timeline. So at this point, we're not pursuing any funding for the conveyance project, although it may be something that we do in the future. We are resting our groundwater basins. At this point, we've turned off all of the wells in the Foothill Basin, and we've turned down our Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant as low as it can go, and expect that to be offline in the next couple of weeks as well. We plan to continue to operate D cell at 3125 acre feet per year and continue some level of extraordinary conservation. This is the outlook for our water supply strategy. So we are currently in year six, which is 2017. And I'll start from the bottom. We have recycled water that's online and supplying water. We have our Kachuma project, which, the little bit of Kachuma water that's shown here was actually carried over. That's what we used from October through December earlier this year. The light blue is Gibraltar water. So you can see we're maximizing Gibraltar deliveries right now. If we receive a partial allocation from Kachuma, it would serve as contingency supply, and we would really carry it over to use next year, which is why you see a larger bar for Kachuma in 2018. The yellow bars are groundwater supplies, so this is what we've already produced for this water year. And then we'll be shutting the wells down and likely keeping them offline until 2019. Orange is imported water. And the assumptions on imported water in this chart are somewhat conservative. For 2018 and 19, we've assumed a 35% allocation. It may be a little low, particularly for next year. So we do have capacity to have more delivered. And if the allocations are less than 35%, we'd be on the market looking for supplemental water purchases. D cell is the green. And then we have extraordinary conservation throughout. This assumes a 30% conservation target for, through the next three years. As you can see, there's a small shortage in 2019. And we feel comfortable we can fill that with state water, either with a larger allocation that may come through or supplemental purchases.
We have a couple of questions, Mr. White and then Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the capacity is at 2017 or 2018, 2018? You're saying we have more capacity than you're showing that we're using there for importing water?
That's correct.
And we, we have the water in San Luis to deliver, should we choose to do so?
These projections don't assume, it only assumes what we already have. So we have some water in San Luis from previous years. And then we've got our current year allocations. But what's shown in this chart does not include any future supplemental water purchases, although we do have the pipe capacity to do that if we, in order to fill the gap in 2019.
And what, what kind, what kind of quantity are we talking about? About, is that, if you look at those little bars, would that be 1,000 acre feet extra that we have of capacity, something like that?
Roughly, yes, that's correct.
And why wouldn't we? I'm imagining that water's going to be cheap to buy now, relatively speaking. So why wouldn't we be buying that water and bringing that in? You're just, you're just, that would be something we might do opportunistically, but we're not going to make that assumption? Is that, how do you?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, that's a great question. The landscape has changed a bit since, compared to the last few years, when San Luis Reservoir was really low, there was a low risk of spilling. So if we were to purchase additional water right now, most likely it would spill from San Luis. And I, the, DWR is changing their policies somewhat to make a carryover of supplemental water purchases more difficult. So going forward, we may be looking for other types of water purchases, not necessarily where we can plan, you know, purchase it now and use it several years out, but most likely the year in which we need it. And would be looking for water purchases that potentially come from outside of the state water contractors, so that we don't have additional water debt that we've accrued by doing exchanges with other state water contractors. So in summary, the main, the main thing that's changed is the ability to carry over water at San Luis, which is why we wouldn't purchase now and rely on it for the next few years.
Okay, but there is potential, and I can appreciate that it's, it's more challenging than it was during the, when, when San Luis was mostly empty and when state regulations were less stringent. The other piece is, in your meetings with other local staff, are you, are you hearing that more capacity is, is everybody else using their full capacity of their conveyance as well?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, from what I've heard, everybody is maxing out their capacity right now and trying to move their water out of San Luis because of the spill, risk. Even going into next year, there's a risk of spill.
Okay, and then finally, the Alameda Well, did that see, how, what's its condition? And I assume there's no chloride issues there, but at least, what are, what are its levels? Are they the same as other, as the other wells?
Yes, it's roughly the same. We still anticipate some yields available if we needed to turn the wells back on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, just to, before going to Mr. Rouse, just to follow up on the San Luis reservoir option. I mean, about, six weeks ago, we were freaking out about losing the spill over. If it would spill, we'd lose the water we purchased and stored. But now you're saying that we have that water. Did we lose some? There was some arrangement with MWD somewhere. Can you give me an update of what happened?
Madam Mayor, yes. We were very fortunate Metropolitan Water District, out of the goodness of their hearts really, found an arrangement for us to be able to transfer our water into their storage. So we were able to preserve a portion of our carryover water. That was a three to two exchange, so we gave them three units of water. They'd give us two back. We have not heard yet if any of that water spilled under Metropolitan's name. If it did, we'd lose a portion of it. But they're still working out the numbers, probably won't hear until May whether any of that spilled under Metropolitan's name.
Okay, so what, and how does that relate to what we're looking at here when you say San Luis water?
Well, we believe that all of that water from Metropolitan Water District has to, has to be used this calendar year. So we're maxing out our pipeline deliveries to bring it to Kachuma and would use it here. So some of this is water that's stored in Kachuma, that we could also carry over at Kachuma as well, once it arrives there. But it, these projections are based on the 60% allocation this year, plus whatever we would get back from Metropolitan Water District. And next year would be a 35% allocation, followed by another 35% allocation. And that's all that's included in these projections.
And was MWD's offer extended to Galita and Montecito and Carpinteria as well?
Yes, there were, CC, Central Coast Water Authority is who the agreement was with, between CCWA and Metropolitan. I believe about 10 of the agencies participated with CCWA. And there was another state water contractor that also participated. So we weren't the only ones. And during that time, when our carryover water was under Metropolitan's name, they had to forego Article 21 deliveries, which is basically water that becomes available when the reservoir's spilling. And so they didn't receive as many of the Article 21's deliveries as they would otherwise have had if they didn't enter this agreement with us. So, so to some extent, they lended us a favor in preserving a portion of our water supply.
Got it. Well, thank you for pursuing it, and that's good. Okay, that helps. Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Howard, we're obviously still dependent on exotic water sources to make up our water use budget, yet I'm hearing some rumors about potentially dire new biological report regarding fish releases in the future, or fish supply for water. Do you know much about that? Is it too early to, to tell what's going to go on? But there was a tremendous amount of water mentioned in the rumors that I heard. And it just, it's, it's chasing our tail to keep importing all this water and then blasting it off to the whims of nymphs, shall we say?
I can't speak to what's in the draft buy-up. We have had a draft water rights order that came out this year. And so we've evaluated the water supply impacts of that. The, the projections I have right now are based on what's in the reservoir today. So the, it assumes about a 40% allocation in April, and then a 40% allocation for next year and nothing after that. So there is a potential that our Kachuma yield could be reduced in the, in the coming years because of the draft biological opinion. It certainly has a potential to reduce the yield. And sedimentation is also an issue that we'll need to address. The operational yield that we have was from a couple decades ago, and there's been some sedimentation since then that will have to be incorporated too.
Way, I was taken aback, because the, the amounts that I heard were almost two, double or maybe even three times the amount that we've had historically released. So I was concerned if we shouldn't be talking to our federal friends sooner than later.
CCRB, the Kachuma Conservation Release Board, is the agency that the city works with on those issues. So we're a member agency of CCRB, and certainly will have been following it and will be coming out with information at the right time.
Mr. Hachkis?
Maybe you answered it and I didn't get it, but did, was there some spillage at San Luis, so we actually lost water?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, there was a spill. We're not certain if the water under Metropolitan's name, that was our water. We don't know if any of that spilled yet.
So that's not, you're not going to hear until May on that one?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Two other questions. Mr. Rouse's rumor mill also indicated to me that there is one, that we, we're now required to release fish water now? Could you describe what, what's going on with it, with that now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we just received emails yesterday that NIMF has directed the Bureau to begin fish releases again into Hilton Creek. We don't know the amount. But we do know that the lake level's not high enough for water-to-gravity flow over to Hilton Creek. And there's two ways to supply water by pumping over to Hilton Creek. One is a barge, which you may have seen out there. We've been informed by the Bureau that the barge needs repair and is not operational. So as a result, they would have to send water through the emergency backup pumping system, which is through the outlet works at Bradbury Dam, which affects our state water deliveries. And so there's a potential that our state water deliveries this week would be interrupted. And we find out more from CCWA on Thursday on this issue. The last time that this occurred, we were able to put in a bypass pipe up and over the dam. And so I expect we'll have a somewhat similar solution. But the, the Bureau has asked that we go farther into the lake. They're concerned about the lake levels and potential for erosion with the previous route that we had. So I expect we'll be, the state water deliveries will resume, and this won't really affect our current strategy. I think we had enough contingency to, to buffer this. But it is an issue we're dealing with this week.
Okay, so, and then secondly, the Gibraltar Reservoir, the, the numbers that you're using for Gibraltar, is that our maximum extraction that we are allowed to take out of Gibraltar at this point?
Correct. Yes, we're limited by monthly diversions and annual diversion. So we are maxing out up to our monthly deliveries.
For that 2018 year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions for now. Go ahead.
Okay, so for our conservation target, our current target is 40%. And that was adopted in December and was intended to address the projected summer of 2017 shortages during peak demand periods. We adopted lawn watering restrictions to help achieve that 40, 40% target. And it was really preventative in case the rains were not sufficient. The recent rains in February have alleviated our summer 2017 peaking issues, but we are still in a drought. And so, our staff recommendation is to revise the conservation target from 40% to 30% since the peaking issue has ceased, and we expect that 30% conservation is sufficient based on our three-year water supply projections. Our current water use regulations, I'm just gonna go through these briefly. Watering is limited to evening and early morning hours. Watering during or 48 after, 48 hours after rainfall is prohibited. Runoff or overspray is prohibited. Hoses must be used with a shut-off nozzle. Commercial fountains over 25 square feet may not operate. No washing of pavement or other hard surfaces. Pools and spas must be covered when not in use. Drought notices required in lodging, restaurants, and gyms. Water is served only upon request, and watering lawns with potable water is prohibited. So, these are the regulations that we've been actively enforcing, and people have been very responsive to them. Our recommendation is to keep all the current water regulations, given that we're still in a drought, except for the mandatory lawn ban. We would recommend, this is a staff recommendation that we would encourage, policy that we go back to voluntary encouragement of letting our lawns go. We, we don't want people to all of a sudden think, have a surge in lawn watering. We're basically back to where we were last fall, and we want to encourage it on a voluntary basis, it's just that we won't be assessing a fine if people are caught doing it.
You have a question, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, the last line on the previous slide, the watering lawns with potable water is prohibited, what does that mean? But if you have, if you're a residential customer, that's all you have is potable water?
That's our current regulation, which we're proposing that we remove at this time.
Okay.
And I will say, we discussed this with Water Commission on March 16th, and they supported the proposed conservation target of 30%, but recommended that the mandatory lawn bans stay in place.
Okay, that previous slide's kinda confusing, because there's things that are staying and things that are going, and they're all listed on the same slide, so that's why I was uncertain about that.
Let's see, so this is what's currently adopted, this whole list, and we're proposing all remain in place, except for the very last one.
Okay.
It's just there to remind people what they are.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. So, I have Madeline Ward, our Water Conservation Supervisor, here with me today to talk about, briefly, the, some of the programs in our water conservation.
Madam Mayor, may I, sorry.
Go ahead.
What was the Water Commission's reasons for saying to keep the water, the lawn ban in place?
I, I think they're concerned that we're still in a drought and didn't want our, our demands to rebound too quickly. We've still got a ways to go, but I think we'll be monitoring this closely, and we'd still have a strong message for voluntary actions to let people's lawns go. This is something we've always had as part of our water conservation message over time for many years, and so we'll continue with the messaging of how to reduce your water use and ways that are easy to reduce both your water use and your water bill. Those have always been something we've encouraged, and I want to have Madeline Ward, our Water Conservation Supervisor, to touch on some of the messaging she does with lawn watering, because that's certainly something we emphasize for ways to reduce your water use.
Okay, but don't be offended if I agree with the Water Commission, thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
The, I have a question about the water supply, slide page 10. Do you know the approximate prices of the water sources?
I, well, roughly, there, are you asking from a variable cost, dollar per acre foot perspective, on whether we use the water, what is the cost whether we use the water or not, or the total cost with the fixed charges?
Well, explain why I'm asking, and maybe that'll help you decide which method to use, but in terms of the watering of lawns, if we're gonna add that back in, what is that gonna cost ratepayers? What is it gonna cost the city? Is that gonna be the most expensive water that we're buying? Is it gonna be the cheapest water?
It's a good question. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, our conservation target does factor into our water rates. As, you know, the most, the majority of our revenue is volumetric charges, and so as we calculate the unit price for our volumetric charges, we have to factor in projected water use. And so, a higher conservation target makes that unit price higher, because we have to recover the same amount of revenue with less water usage. I would say that our alternative would be supplemental water purchases, and it's more cost-effective to go out and purchase additional water than to rely, have a extraordinary conservation effect on our water rates would be more for conservation than it would be to go out and buy supplemental water purchases.
And that's really just, it depends on the market at the time and what's happening around the state?
Correct.
Do you have an estimate of how much it would cost?
Well, it's, it's been very cost-effective in the last year. We've been able to secure water with Antelope Valley East Kern AVEC. That was $300 an acre foot, or, it's, it ranges anywhere from $300 to $1,000 an acre foot for the purchase price.
And once our D cell plant is operating, what's gonna be the operating cost per acre foot?
$1,400 an acre foot.
So, if we don't water lawns and we can avoid maxing out some of those D cell costs, will that positively impact ratepayers? Or is there enough supplemental purchase potential that it makes the D cell plant less of a factor?
I, are you asking if, if we turn down, if we have more conservation and turn down the D cell production? If that would be more cost-effective?
Well, the general question I'm asking is, is what's it gonna cost ratepayers if we water lawns? Because that's gonna be a significant number of acre feet. What's, what's your guesstimate of how many acre feet we'd add back into our demand if we turn off lawn bans?
So, so, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, ultimately lifting the lawn ban, reducing our conservation goal is gonna take the pressure off our unit cost of water, ultimately.
And I'm not asking about the unit price, because that really varies household to household. But I'm asking about the, and you're talking about unit price to the customer, or unit price in terms of your purchasing ability?
No, the unit price to the customer, so it's gonna make those units of water more affordable, if you wanna put it that way, if more people are using water. Our costs, our, 80% of our cost of operating this water system are pretty much fixed, and so if we have more customers using water, it reduces the amount of revenue we need to bring in per unit of water sold. And so, by having this, lifting the turf grass ban, by reducing our conservation target, you know, we're kinda just trying to strike that balance. If we have the water available, being able to sell it ultimately lowers those costs, so for those people who use and live on fixed incomes, it should help to reduce the pressure on their, their water bill.
So, people who are watering lawns will pay more into the system?
Mm-hmm.
And that will overcome the, the possibly more expensive water that has to be purchased or paid for because people are watering lawns and the demand goes up?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward, I'm the Water Conservation Supervisor. As always, the city is here to help all of our customers better understand how water is used on their property and how to reduce water use. Our most popular program is what's called a free water checkup. It's available for all customers, whether you're a home, business, industrial, complex, any of the above, we're happy to come out and help you take a look around your property, help you read your water meter, and determine any leaks you may have. This is National Fix a Leak Week, so I encourage you to test your toilets especially for any hidden leaks, and we have a lot of great information on our website about how to find and identify hidden leaks. We have a variety of very popular programs in terms of rebate programs. One of the ones that we've had since 2009 that's been very popular during the drought is our landscape rebate for replacing high water use plants such as lawns and/or high water use irrigation systems. We also have a rebate on high efficiency washing machines. Those old top loader machines use about 30 gallons per load, and the new front loading machines use about eight to 10 gallons per load, so there's considerable savings there. We have a rebate on pool covers. We have free sprinkler nozzle program, a free mulch delivery of the county's mulch two times a year per customer, and free rain shut-off sensors, which would come in very handy today. This is a before and after that I like to highlight. These are two different properties that went through our landscape rebate program. The top property is the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors building that's on Chapala Street, and if you're ever in the area, I encourage you to take a look at the garden and walk through. We have a great demonstration garden sign, and you can identify some of the features since it is a rain garden, and they've redirected their downspouts. So, when it was an existing lawn, they used to water the lawn three times a week, and with the new rain garden, they water it three times a year. This is a great study that was done by Santa Monica College, and they compared two different landscapes side by side for a year, and as you can see, it's not only just considerable water savings, but it's also savings in terms of green waste that's produced and maintenance hours. Sustainable landscapes generally just need a bit of a nip and tuck each year, they don't need considerable mowing and blowing.
Okay, so our next steps, we'll determine our conservation target, which is then used to estimate our projected water use for next year, and would be applied for, into FY18 water rates. And we will continue to monitor our supplies and demands with monthly drought updates to both Water Commission and Council. So, our recommendation is that Council adopt a resolution establishing a revised 30% water conservation target, and updated water use regulations effective during a stage three drought emergency, and those regulations were included in the Council packet, and it's keeping all regulations the same with the exemption of the lawn ban, which would be removed.
Okay, thank you, we do have some public comment, why don't we go to that? We'll have Lindsey Baker and then Scott Wentz.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Lindsey Baker, League of Women Voters. I've spoken to you in the past regarding our support of banning lawn watering. You heard seven times it stated today that we are still in a drought, that we are planning for two more dry years and three years of extraordinary conservation. We are still in a drought today. The League of Women Voters is actively involved in water issues. We have a water committee, we've hosted a presentation by the water manager from Ventura on potable water use. We've hosted presentations by members of the Galita Water District. We are studying water regionally. We attend the Water Commission meetings. In a recent brochure from the Galita Water District, it stated that reducing lawn watering saves the most amount of water. As I've stated before, Santa Barbara is a Mediterranean climate. A Mediterranean climate means long, dry summers and droughts. Reducing watering lawns saves water. This is an opportunity to change the mentality of the people in Santa Barbara. Bless you. They are already having, making changes to water conservation plants in their yards. They've already accepted that lawn watering has been banned. This is not the time to reverse that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Wentz.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I own commercial property just over here by Santa Barbara High School. The last major drought, I turned off the outside water a year before the city required it to be turned off. This year, this term, I shut it off, and we've been off for two years before the city wanted us to stop outside watering. So, I want you to understand, I understand this, I was also heavily invested in IONIC Exchange Water Purification Company, so I know a little bit about what's going on here. I urge you to allow us to water lawns a minimum of once a week. Now, people say, well, it's counterintuitive. The Board of Realtors was watering the lawn three times a week. Well, there's no need for that. A well-maintained lawn can go a minimum of two times a week, and with proper care, probably once a week. Lawns are high oxygen-producing items. They produce as much as any tree we have. They also are a high carbon binding plant, which means every time that lawn grows, it's binding carbon and reducing the carbon footprint. So, if the city can continue using potable water, which it has been using on Annapamoochee for the stone pines, then you should be able to allow us to do that. Thank you.
To the council. So, there are two items, one is the conservation rate down to 30%, and then I guess it's the issue of rescinding the mandatory water ban. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I will, I certainly support the staff recommendations, but I also want to appreciate the League of Women Voters, over the years, I can remember back to the previous drought that even at that time, the league was weighing in, month in, month out, year in, year out with just, and that really is the core of what has gotten our conservation rates in this city down over the long term, not just for this drought, but coming out of that last drought, we dropped our water use, and we never did get anywhere near back to the consumption that we had prior to the last drought, so. And I, I feel like the points that Mr. Dominguez were, was drilling down on, that the cost to the consumer is lower if there's a bit more consumption, and frankly, it may help the land values and just our real estate is dependent on having the ability to water a little more freedom in that area. So, with that in mind, I moved the council, passed the resolution as outlined by staff, and repeal Resolution 1673, which was the lawn watering ban.
Second.
Okay, move by White, second by Rouse. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is why I always, always don't look forward to having to explain the logic behind water rates to constituents, because there's, it's like following the proverbial pretzel. You know, at one point in time, we were talking about how the saved water was the cheapest water we could get, and of course, there's always that, that fine line between when nobody buys water, now we have to go into our water reserves, and there are raise, raise bubble. So, anyway, I do agree with the League of Women Voters' stance in terms of not watering lawns, and I think most people have, that, at least what a buyer has observed, have adopted something along those lines. I don't necessarily think it takes an ordinance to do it, however. Mr. Hagmark talked from time to time about drought fatigue amongst our clientele, our constituents out there, and I agree with that, and I think there's been an esprit de corps in this community that's always risen above everything we've asked them to do. They've always exceeded our, whatever we've either mandated or asked for. Our citizens aren't children, they, they get this, they're not gonna run out and start, you know, planting acres and acres of sod tomorrow based on this. Everybody still realizes there is a drought, even though it's raining. I think the work that Ms. Ward does in terms of information and alternatives is really valuable, and I think it's been really successful. I agree with this motion, I think that we can I think that we can completely, at least allow for a little bit of relief from the drought fatigue, even then still realizing and still communicating that we are in fact in a drought, but still have the same effective way of, of going forward and enhancing our city and hopefully bringing back some of our water funds that are so, so greatly depleted at this point in time.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With all due respect to staff and their recommendation, I'm persuaded that we're still in a severe drought and that, or I know that's a term of art, we're still in a drought. And I see the red in your chart and I just know we need to conserve water. And I might be persuaded to go to 30%, but I would still like to keep the ban on the lawn watering in place. So I'll just vote no on, since the two items are together in the, in the motion. I would like people to start using, doing something differently with their outdoors and we need to do that long-term. So, thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Yeah, I think my path to supporting the staff recommendation and the motion is the simple fact that when we enacted the lawn ban, it was to address a 700-acre-foot shortage that was going to come up this summer that was extraordinary and unplanned for outside of our multi-year planning effort. And now events have changed to fill that gap more than five times that. And that it just makes sense to be consistent with the policy that we had before that occasion arisen because it has been addressed to remove the lawn watering ban. But the message remains the same, which is that residents should continue to conserve and they were conserving before that, that event. And I have great confidence they will continue to conserve. One little detail that is new in the presentation today, for the first time I saw this, is the charts on Slides 11 and 12 that show the recharge of the groundwater basins. And one thing I think is important to kind of fine-tune the messaging on is that the staff report and the, the charts talk about there being a five-to-10-year period to recharge the water basins. And yet the charts don't show that. It's not the recovery, maybe I'm looking at the wrong slides on my chart then. Maybe go to 12. It's easier to see. Yes, those, the recovery, it looks more to me like you're at 80% to 90% recovery after two to three years. That lasts, it's maybe one of those long-tail situations where it takes a very long time to recover to 100%, but those charts to me look like you get back very quickly, much more quickly than that five-to-10-year horizon would indicate. So I'd like a little bit more explanation for that.
Well, Storage Unit 1 does rebound more quickly. It is a more confined aquifer, so it responds more quickly to pumping. When we turn our pumping on, it dramatically reduces and then when we turn it off, it dramatically goes back up. So I guess it depends on, you know, how far you go. If you go out, if you go out, say this far, it was about a five-year recovery. I guess if you are looking from the low point all the way out to when it gets to fully recovered, it was about five years. It could be less, but this is just our example of what happened in the last drought.
I guess the only point I'm raising is that it just, it gives a different impression when you say that it takes five to 10 years to recover. It almost sounds like it doesn't start recovering until about five years, but it really recovers most of its capacity fairly quickly, which is a different impression than that five-to-10-year horizon. So I think that's just something to, as part of the communication of a really complicated subject to the public, I think this is a nuance that's important. Lots of people, I think, think that, you know, we can't use the groundwater again for another 10 years. That's the implication, I think, that comes from that. It takes five to 10 years to recover the basin, as opposed to, no, that's not the case, that we could go back if we had to and that on the water supply seven-year program and see that we would actually go back and use groundwater within a couple of years if we needed to.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's a great point. If we get a couple of normal rainfall years, that helps to recharge our groundwater basins. If we have extremely dry years, we might not see as much recovery. But yes, this is really showing that in Storage Unit 1, after five years, it's fully recovered. And then between there, it's partially recovered. For Foothill Basin, it was 10 years before it was fully recovered, but again, in the near term, it can have some partial recovery.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to pass this. As a reflection that we appreciate what people have done and it really does have an effect. If we don't, they're just going to go like, "Well, why do we try so hard?" Nothing making, not making anything better for us. So if for no other reason than to say, "Well done," then that's why we should pass this.
Mr. Dominguez.
So I'd be much happier if we maybe structured the motion so that we pass it, but contingent on a few things happening between now and the end of the month or maybe mid-April, because it seems like there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know about the water spillage with, with the Metropolitan Water District. When would we know dispositively?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, mid-May is when we're told that we'll have the final numbers. Right now, there's a discrepancy where Metropolitan was showing that a portion of the water spilled, not all of it, but a small portion, and DWR was showing that nothing had spilled. So they're reconciling the numbers and we'll know in mid-May exactly what happened. But I do expect we'll get some water returned, even using the Metropolitan water numbers. We'd still get some of our water back.
So there's, the worst-case scenario is that we would lose all of those units?
I think worst case is we'd get 1,000 acre-feet back out of the roughly 4,500 that we put in.
And which number does that correlate to on Slide 24? It looks like the water supply strategy slide?
Oh, I guess somewhere the other way.
One more is the one I'm...
This one?
No, it was, let's see. Well, you could show me on that one. Where does the, either the 4,500 or 1,000 map, which color?
It's the orange bar. So this is partially our 60% allocation from this year plus whatever we, you know, assuming a thousand acre-feet from Metropolitan. We also have over 2,000 acre-feet already in Kachuma. There's state water, the city's state water already in Kachuma. So the combination of those three, our current year allocation, what we get from Metropolitan, what we already have in Kachuma, makes up the orange bar.
For Water Year Six?
For, yes. Water Year Six. And then whatever we don't use can be carried over to future years.
Okay. And the, where are we with the Montecito agreement? Is that something that we'd know more about in a month?
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Hagmark?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the board is actually discussing the water supply agreement today at their board meeting. And so at this point, they are still weighing whether they want to participate in the cost of the conveyance pipeline, which is the only method to ensure that water can be delivered to them. And so we're basically waiting to hear what they have to say on that.
Mr. Casey.
Councilmember Dominguez, I, I, staff's recommendation is based upon the information we have today. I think we've shown that we're not shy returning to Council if we have a dramatic change one way or the other and adjust conservation efforts and approaches based upon that. So I want to assure you that if something changes in a matter of months or whatever, we'll be back to you and have that conversation and recommend some adjustments if we feel that's necessary.
So my theory is that I'm only halfway through the list, is there's enough unknowns now where I hate to say, "Start watering," and then a month later saying, "Stop watering." So that's, that's kind of the point I'm, I'm going to eventually make quickly regarding the D cell. So if, if, what are the options then with the conveyance or where are we planning now of where's the water going to be delivered from the D cell plant?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we are planning to basically put it right into our existing distribution system, which does have the ability to take the full 3,000 acre-feet a year without any type of additional conveyance pipeline. It's when we talk about additional capacity or the need to convey it to Montecito where we need to have that pipeline in place. And maybe it might help you out with your, your question that you're getting at, which is, you know, is it premature? And I, I think what we can say is that we have adequate supplies going forward that we know for this year, we are certainly covered and 30% conservation will get there. Under the worst-case scenario, we could be looking at maybe some modifications next year, but we're thinking even based on, I think, some conservative assumptions, 30% is going to be adequate for next year. So really, I don't see us having to run back here and make any modifications this year. We have a pretty sizable, a 40% allocation of Kachuma that we are planning to get and planning to use next year. That water could be used this year if, for some reason, there was some dramatic change. But I feel like we actually, unlike last year, we actually have some contingency water to work with right now that allows us to move things around and not be in a position where we're running back to have to change the conservation goals.
Yeah, it's night and day from last year. We all appreciate that.
From two months ago.
The, in the 2019, that little red spot, one, it's, it's smallish and it's two years off. But again, that's something that, even hearing maybe about the fish release numbers that the other council member raised. And I would like to find out what we could do more about the volometric versus the fixed costs in terms of how it impacts rate payers. So that would give us some time to study that.
Yes, and what's key, I think, to making, kind of this, getting this direction today is we're going to turn right around and now start working on the rates because the rate, the water rates are now going to be built around this, which will allow us to come back to you and have more of that rate discussion, which I think you're eager to probably get in and talk about. And there's certainly a lot of work to be done on that if we're going to get those adopted by August.
Thank you. I'm going to, because of the, the uncertainty of some of these and the pricing, I'm going to say no today, but again, if it was something that would come back in a month, I would probably vote yes if these unknowns became more green than red.
So the purpose of the lawn watering ban when we did it was because, and I think Mr. Hart said it well, was that we were expecting a shortfall of water this summer because we didn't know it was going to rain as much as it did when we instituted the ban in December, right? So now that it has rained and that we have the water that you have put in here that you expect to have through this, rest of this water year, we don't have that shortfall in the summer. Right? That was the rationale behind the watering ban.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. It was a shortage, and it wasn't a shortage of actually having water, it was able, being able to actually deliver those waters during those peak months.
It's sort of like cash flow issues.
Everybody, yes, exactly.
Month to month and in the high-peak year, months, you needed that water. So just to go along the line, to, to just carry through with what Mr. Dominguez was saying, worst-case scenario of some of these unknowns, I guess the question is, do you still, if the worst-case scenario happened with San Luis water, with fish releases, with all those things, would you expect a shortfall this summer or not?
Madam Mayor, this summer I don't, I wouldn't expect a shortfall this summer.
Okay, even, even if the unknowns got to you in the worst-case scenario?
Correct. We're primarily using our Gibraltar water this year and so that makes up the majority of our water supply.
So, so the difference between December and now is really Gibraltar. We didn't, because it wasn't filled, we can, we can use that. That's the gap that we're talking about here that we didn't have before. Okay. Because I, I think, I think the messaging is important that we said upfront, because of the shortfall, we really need to ratchet up even more. And if that's not necessary, let's not stretch out extreme measures of water conservation, but still keep the message about water conservation in general, which is important. So 30% is still significant and in fact, probably more than most places around the state. In fact, most places around the state don't even have a drought anymore. So, so, and if it got to a point where we would see a shortage into the future, we can come back and look at a lawn watering ban. Again, as I said, when we implemented, if it's raining, you don't need to water your lawn anyway and it's been raining. So, you know, I think that's going to answer some of the concerns. So I, I appreciate what Councilmembers Mario and Dominguez are, where they're coming from, but I think to be honest with why we put together the ban in the first place was to address this particular shortfall that no longer exists, then it makes sense to say we don't need the ban anymore, but still really push for water conservation, which I know we will. So I, I can, I can appreciate where you're, where you're coming from here. And I appreciate where the Water Commission was because they want to make sure that we never get back to where we were. But I think the facts have changed since December and we've been always working on doing the best we can with the facts we have in front of us. So, so I, I'm, I'm okay with this resolution, knowing that I hear from you that worst-case scenario of the unknowns, we'll still have enough water to cover the summer, which was the whole rationale behind the water ban.
So, Madam Mayor, I mean, it's, I spoke on March 7th about this with you. It's, it's really interesting. We're trying to strike a balance here in recognizing that really February 17th was a pretty turning point, a significant turning point. Without that one event that occurred on February 17th, we would be looking at basically the same years that we've been having over the last five years. It was that significant. It came when a watershed was finally wet and then we got that 10-inch rain event. Without that, it, it doesn't look too different, too different from what we've seen in the past. And so we're trying to strike that balance and recognizing that, yes, we do have addition, much more water than we had had, but really, climate-wise, we haven't seen a significant change locally here in what we've been looking at. So this is kind of addressing the drought fatigue, striking some balance, recognizing that if we need to go back to this community and ask for more conservation, there's, they respect and trust that we are looking at it and watching it closely. So it is a, you know, it's a fine dance, but we've been so fortunate, this community's been really responsive to when we ask for something, they've been there for us, so.
Okay. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two points. One is that that 30% conservation number is 30% conservation of a base use rate that is one of the lowest in the state. We have a conservation program which has baked in low water use in a, in a host of ways. It started in, 25 years ago, it was toilet rebates and such like. And we now have, and the staff has, has worked on a very rational program of what's the next place where money can be invested in conservation? And we're getting the, the long-term benefits of that. So that 30% is not 30% of the state average number by any means. We, we win gold stars for our base program and that 30% is on top of that excellent record. So that's to be noted. And then I wanted to add something to Mr. Hart's conversation about the wells. And that is that while there's a, there's a vertical rise in, in groundwater that you see in those, in those maps, what you don't see is the pushback, and particularly in Basin 1, we have the chlorides that invade from the coat, from the ocean and we need to, and that it's the height, it's the pressure, the hydrostatic pressure that pushes those salts back out. And that's the, where it really slows down. And, and what we benefited from, even with a change of program over the last, from 25 years ago, we used to just pump the heck probably even in your earliest days on Council. We use those wells all the time and we're always, we were more vulnerable. We've now got more of a program where we, we've pushed those chlorides further back out.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that's 5-2 with Dominguez and Mario opposed. All right. Thank you very much. Move on to Item 7.